Good evening. I'd like to call to order the May ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Um, once again, we're doing a hybrid board study session plus a meeting with action items. Um, so I'd like to, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Diambrojo?
Here.
Trustee Moses?
Here.
Trustee Petrichoff?
Here.
Trustee Thorpe?
Here.
Trustee Watts? Here. President McDonald?
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, Mastana Jupik? Principal of Maples Elementary, who introduce students who will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Maybe six o'clock.
And in her absence, I will step in and get us on our way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
David, do you know if she was planning on coming at seven?
Probably.
Okay, um, perhaps we should give them a call and maybe reschedule instead of having them come?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Um, next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Merza, and we'll begin with the district commendations. Commendations to bus driver Patricia Hartman and bus aide Caitlin Humphries. Both employees received the two thousand twenty-two Wayne County Excellence in Transportation Award. The award is presented to individuals who exemplify excellence in providing or supporting the safe transportation of students in the county. Commendations to Susan Briggs, who will be recognized as an outstanding arts educator at this year's Mayor's Arts Awards on May eleventh. On a related note, commendations to all the students who were selected to participate in the citywide art show held at the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center in April. Commendations especially to senior artists Stella Rochon from Dearborn High, Musa Salman from Edsel Ford High, and Janine Jadallah from Fortson High. Commendations as well to Anna, a fifth grader from Lindberg, who had her piece entitled Warm and Cool Tree selected to receive the superintendent's awards. Commendations to a number of people who helped with the logistics and administration of the required state tests for the virtual K-12 students, including Dr. Dan Patterson, Maile Harp, Nadia Mackled, Carly Wall, Dr. Ryan Lazar, Adiya Abu Sbey, Fatima Abdullah, Ahlam Salem, Janine Anoyan, Erin Mickingville, and the DPS virtual staff. Commendations to Ms. Rahaf Sala and students for raising money to support DPS virtual student and family in need. Commendations to Katie Hattrick for her assistance with the DPS virtual postcard and mailing.
High school. Commendations to Dearborn High String Orchestra and Symphonic Band and their director, Mr. McCloskey, who performed on March tenth at the annual MSBOA Band and Orchestra Festival. The orchestra earned an excellent rating and the band earned a superior rating. Commendations as well to Fortson High School's music program for their success at the music festival. The choir received high scores and praise from all four judges on their strong string and preparation. Orchestra received a superior rating, the highest score available. The string quartet also received a superior rating at the solo and ensemble festival. Commendations to Dearborn Police Officer Sala, student resource officer at Edsel High, Edsel Ford High School, for his effort to assist a student with a potentially serious problem involving a cellphone. Officer Sala went above and beyond to resolve the issue and help the student. Commendations to all DCMSD students that placed at the Science and Engineering Fair of Metro Detroit, with a special congratulations to Glenn Warren, who earned a grand prize and a spot to the International Science Fair in Atlanta. Glenn also placed second at the Michigan State Science Fair. The full list of winners from DCMSD includes: Grand Prize winner Glenn Warren; third-place winners Jed Habhab, Angela Mata, and Batul Hamka; fourth-place winners Celine Alatras, Elizabeth Daughtry, and Zach Fazio; fifth-place winners Adam Abdul-Jabbar, Rama Al Yari, Dina Ali, Mirna Asi, Mahasin Albori, Reem Elsegir, Adam Fakori, Fatima Hamka, Sally Hamud, Aiden Oakley, and Malik Segir; sixth-place winner Abraham Abdul-Karim. Commendations to senior Jordan Boyce of Edsel Ford High School for being a finalist for the National Merit Scholarship Award. Commendations to juniors Peter Shondorf and Mark Struman from Dearborn High School, who took the fall PSAT and met the requirements to be recognized as part of the two thousand twenty-three National Merit Scholarship Program. Commendations Edsel Ford High School and staff for raising more than thirteen thousand dollars during Charity Week. Students exceeded their goal of ten thousand dollars. The funds were donated to the United States Humanitarian Foundation. Uh, commendations to high school, Edsel Ford High School and DCMSD senior Angela Mata, who was named Amazon Future Engineer Scholarship recipient. She received forty thousand dollars over four years to help her pursue a degree in computer science and will receive a paid internship with Amazon after her freshman year of college. Commendations to Dearborn High School film students, who were recently recognized by the Michigan Chapter of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. Films recognized this year by the Michigan Chapter include: Ducks Don't Drink and Drive, won for public service announcement and for animation, graphics, and special effects; Caitlin Milligan, writer and director; Zara Almakhash; producer Kai Hunter and Diamond Fuller; and Ryan Hammond for lighting; Christmas Popcorn won for commercial animations, graphics, and special designs; Caitlin Milligan, writer and director; Kai Hunter, producer Mustafa Alzadi, editor; Smash Bash won for audio sound; Owen Shuck, sound editor; Oxford Fight Song also won for audio and sound; and Ian Kennedy, audio mixer and sound editor.
Continuing high school, the public can have a chance to view some of the winners at this year's WDHS Film Festival on May twentieth and twenty-first. The event starts at seven PM both nights. Tickets are ten dollars and available at the door or before the event at the WDHS studio inside the school. Commendations to Dearborn High students who won awards at the Michigan Interscholastic Press Association's annual spring contest, uh, spring awards contest. All the winning articles were part of the school newspaper, The Pioneer Press. Winning students include: Fatima Faqih and Jasmine Ward took third place for their new story, That's a Rap. Hussein Hamud and Alex Ahmed received an honorable mention for their informative feature, Dave's Hot Chicken. Luke Kearns won third place for his personal narrative, Hunt to D3. Rowan Hamka and Sadie Waitoix received an honorable mention in diversity coverage for a new mayor in town. Jasmine Ward and Alyssa Osada received an honorable mention in sports news for Girls' Varsity Basketball Acquires New Head Coach, Middle School. Commendation to O.L. Smith teacher, Ms. Shelley Eifert, for spearheading the service project for the coronary show and laundry in Corktown, Detroit. O.L. Smith opted to help with the group's drive to collect three thousand pair of socks for the homeless. The service project was a huge success, with five hundred and sixty-one new pairs of socks being donated by the generosity of Smith students, families, and staff. Commendations to Bryant Middle School students, who held a penny war during Spirit Week and were able to raise two thousand five hundred dollars. The funds were given to the Paul Martin family. Paul, an eighth grader at Bryant, recently donated bone marrow/stem cells to his father in a transplant performed at the University of Michigan. And lastly, elementary school. Commendations to the Gear Park community for donating more than one thousand books for the March's Reading Month Book Drive. New books were donated to a local charity that included them with read baskets given to students in need at the end of Ramadan. And that'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, trustee Moses.
We thought you would leave without introducing yourself.
Sorry. My name is Ryan Merza, and I'm a senior at Dearborn High.
My name is Mary Hamka, and I'm also a senior at Dearborn High.
Okay, so pioneers, listen up. I'm gonna tell you something. I know Ryan for a very long time. Actually, for full disclosure, Ryan worked on my campaign for, for office. So, thank you, Ryan, for going and beyond for all of our, your classmates and your community, and as you as well. Um, I have a question. Right now, you're a senior. Where are you going for college?
So, I'm attending the University of Michigan Ann Arbor.
Great job.
Thank you.
And what are, what about you?
Um, I'm planning, I'm planning to attend Wayne State University.
What are you studying?
I'm studying neuroscience.
Amazing. How about you?
Um, I'm planning to study marketing with a minor in law.
Great. Well, good luck to both of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanna add real quickly with all the commendations. So many of them were about donations or, or events that the students led to create a avenue for donations, to special clauses. And it never, it always amazes me what our students are able to accomplish and the generous hearts that they have in the community in general. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Madam Chair, um, since you mentioned that, I would like to also, um, an additional commendation to Deval Elementary, uh, for, and I think we may have something showing later on for their, and to its principal, to the teachers and staff for putting up an amazing, uh, one-hundredth anniversary open house where they showcased Deval history. And I know of trustee Barry was there, many of you, trustee Thorpe and trustee Watts, yeah, was there as well, so, um, and Dr. Maliko perhaps may have passed by. It was a four-hour event, and I was so amazed by the history of Deval. And this goes to a testament that our schools are doing amazing things. Um, I know we found very, uh, funny and, and I think some memories, amazing memories of folks who are now doing amazing things, who went to Deval. So, um, it's, uh, it was great, it was a great event. So commendation to her. Also commendations to Officer Sala, who was mentioned. Uh, he shares my first name, so I get to brag about the things that he does for our schools as a police officer, as a resource officer. He goes, I've seen him, um, do his best, uh, not only, uh, in his job as a police officer, on the line and putting himself on the line, but also in a basketball court. So he was, um, playing for the Yemeni versus, uh, the Yemeni charity basketball. It's an annual now, it becomes a tradition, that Dearborn plays Hamtramck. And, uh, unfortunately, Dearborn lost. So, but, uh, next game, they, they're planning to hold it at Edsel Ford or one of our high schools. They held it actually in one of the, uh, charter schools in, uh, in Hamtramck. So we're, I hope that our school district would host the next, uh, Hamtramck versus Dearborn charity, uh, competition, which drew a lot of folks and also donated a lot of money to War and Chor, Yemen. Uh, the last commendations is to the musical course. I know I attended that at Smith for Edsel Ford, and we talked about the musical program and that we have to act on connecting our middle schools with our high schools. And Mr. Rommel can tell you how amazing Edsel Ford Choir and their performing arts program over there and what they've presented to our students. And students, I just witnessed the awe of our students looking, and many of them, when asking them, hey, do you wanna join? And they were already in Smith, um, program. Um, so, um, it's, it's a testament to say that, hey, we, we've heard the music department, and I hope that we continue to do this, is that we're connecting, um, middle schools with high schools, that theater program that Dr. Maliko has initiated, and we strengthen that program, making sure that our students get the best education and not only education, but also have an amazing time in our schools. And I would hope that we continue to do that. So that was an amazing success story. Thank you. And thank you to Edsel Ford. They raised fourteen thousand dollars for, for Yemen. That's, that's incredible. And it's not only the, the monetary fund, but it also, you know, to raise awareness about what's happening in, in many of these students' native country, which we hopefully now, there is current truth. So we would hope that, uh, peace would, would, would settle in that country and, and Ukraine as well, um, and we would see an end to wars in, in, in the entire world. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening. A donation of three hundred and eighty dollars has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for admission to the Ford Rouge Plant Tour. A donation of three thousand five hundred dollars has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a glow forge machine. A donation of seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a projector for preschoolers. A donation of two thousand six hundred and four dollars has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for plasma cam cutter for the welding class. A donation of three thousand dollars has been offered to Maples Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for coral risers. A donation of six thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars has been offered to Edsel Ford High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for theater microphones. A donation of a power wheelchair has been offered to Howe School by Mobility City to be used to provide mobility training for students in the SXI program. And lastly, a grant of four thousand dollars has been offered to Deval and Whitmore Bowles Elementary Schools by the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs to be used for the Detroit Chamber Winds and Strings to present the musical elements to the students at Deval and Whitmore Bowles. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Teacher of the Year.
Good evening. President McDonald, trustee, superintendent Maliko. The Teacher of the Year is an outstanding event, and I would like to invite those teachers who were able to make it tonight to come up to the podium, please. Not all of them could attend because they're very busy, but we do have a few here. So if you are present, please come forward.
Well, I'm gonna start this out. Well done.
We would like to recognize and congratulate Nate Brau with McDonald Elementary in the pre-K to second grade category. Sarah Varier of Howe Elementary, third to fifth grade category. Todd Colville of Eunice Middle School. Haifa Murad Shama of Dearborn High. And Kathy Tate in Adult Education. Truly an outstanding accomplishment, and we are so very proud, and we truly appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you and congratulations.
Absolutely. Can we see your awards? Oh, very nice. Congratulations on, thank you for all that you do for our students in our district.
Thank you.
And I guess we need to give a thank you to the Dearborn Chamber of Commerce, who hosts this.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for their support and, uh, their, through the years.
Madam Chair was, or, sorry, Madam President, was this event on Thursday, correct? Was it Thursday? So I, my apology for not attending this event. This is the first time I miss it, and it's because my wife was traveling at the same time. I had to take her to the airport. But thank you for what you do. We truly appreciate what you do. Although I was not there, I know some trustees were there. Um, so, uh, I know many teachers were nominated, and, uh, while you did not win, uh, please know that you are truly appreciated by your students, by your families. And, uh, to the awardees, this is obviously a badge of honor just to say that your students nominated you for this award. So congratulations. This is definitely a high-level achievement. Thank you.
Congrats.
Next item, please. Staff appreciation drawing.
Good evening. The winners for the, for May include Aviva Match. She's the speech and language pathologist at Hague. Zainah Mackled, she's a teacher at William Ford. Marina Hamzi, she's a teacher at Woodworth, that I actually hired. Shelby Liebler, a teacher at McCullough Eunice. Sue Bricki, a paraprofessional at Long. Alex Goki, an art teacher at Lindberg Elementary. Actually, he's at Deval, Lindberg, Hague, Salina, and Salina Intermediate. And my kids still, to this day, talk about Mr. Goki's, Goki's, sorry, his mustache. They were just talking about it two days ago. Margaret Peggy Earl, she's a teacher at Oakman. Nikita Bell, she's a social worker at Stout. Rachel Parker, a speech and language pathologist at Miller. Zainah Brayshuni, she's a childcare preschool lead teacher at Lindberg. Congratulations to all ten of you. I'm gonna read the, um, nomination for Ms. Mirna Hamzi, the teacher at Woodworth. Ms. Mirna Hamzi teaches eighth-grade newcomers all four content area subjects. She leads a model classroom and sets a positive example for others to follow. She is the epitome of an educator and a leader who goes above and beyond every single day to prepare her students for high school, college, and beyond. On a daily basis, Ms. Hamzi instills a positive work ethic and life skills in her students. She also motivates and encourages her students to set goals and work hard towards achieving them with persistence and determination. She spends hours preparing differentiated, rigorous, and engaging lessons. In addition, she is a leader who collaborates vertically and horizontally with her newcomer team, with her newcomer team members during PLC and departmental meetings to ensure that all newcomers become proficient in English while learning the content and mastering the skills needed for progress and success. Just amazing. Thank you, Ms. Hamzi.
Thank you. Before we move on to superintendent's update, I just want to take a moment. Anyone that's interested in addressing the board, please make sure you fill out your, um, blue cards and get them in directly. If you're coming and several people are planning on talking about, uh, the same issue, if you know each other, um, see if you can't appoint a spokesperson, and then you can all come up and have one person, um, be the spokesperson for that group. Thank you. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update, agenda items.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll just, like I normally do, go down my items. Today, we do have, uh, one retiree, Sharon Baloga. So I want to, uh, thank her for years of service and congratulate her on her retirement. We can acknowledge that. Thirty-six years. I will also start going down my list. I wanna mention to the board and make it public that the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three board meeting schedule, it's been in board briefs, and it would be on the agenda, uh, next month, gives the board a chance to look at the dates, make sure that everything's okay between the P-12 and the college. Moving right along, our COVID numbers, um, has, have remained very low, which is very nice. I'm gonna kinda tie this into one of the other items. I have graduation and other ceremonies that are going on. It is very nice to be in person, um, and we hope, we are confident we're gonna stay there, but we continue to monitor the numbers. We do have a small number of cases in the district, but we're handling it and following all the protocols we need to. So that is a positive, for sure. I know we're all tired of the pandemic. Next, I have, um, Mark Andrews, who's gonna come up with Officer Mardini. Since, um, John Leacher is no longer with us, um, he probably would have been the individual coming up, but I talked to President McDonald, and Officer Mardini has agreed to come up. As we talked, it came up last month about lockdowns, and so they were here to address that issue between soft lockdowns and regular lockdowns.
Yeah, so it's my pleasure to introduce one of our great, uh, resource officers, Corporal Mardini. Uh, if he's not the only one, he's one of the only ones that certified in the ALIS, um, training. Um, he's gonna take a moment tonight to explain the difference between a hard lockdown and a soft lockdown, and then he'd be open to any questions to the event that Dr. Maliko mentioned.
And I do know he was the, involved with Fortson.
He was an acting officer at Fortson and was a part of the decision of, of making, of calling for the soft lockdown.
Good afternoon. So I understand there's some questions about lockdowns, lockdown drills, uh, how we do our lockdowns? Or was it the event specifically that caused Fortson to be on lockdown?
I think it's a soft lockdown in that event versus the, you know, the normal lockdown procedure.
Okay.
And what would be the difference on making the call?
Okay. Look, I can give you a summary of what happened that night, that day. Uh, just so it'll give you some context. Um, Detroit Police had a chase that was coming through our city. Um, they were on Schaefer, um, driving towards, uh, Fortson. And of course, the bad guy decides to go to whose parking lot, Fortson. Uh, when he pulled into Fortson, we had our dispatch notify Fortson to go on lockdown. Um, I was already on my way, so I was really close to Fortson. So I responded to Fortson. Other officers went to assist with Detroit. Um, we, um, and again, so you can call it a soft lockdown or a hard lockdown, or you can call it like an interior threat or exterior threat. It, it's really semantics. But as a precaution, we put lock, uh, Fortson on lockdown. Um, we determined right away that the suspect had fled across Schaefer, so not even towards the school. Um, I responded to the school. Um, we decided to keep all the doors locked, which would, you could call a soft lockdown, um, not to disrupt learning, because we determined there's not a real threat. But as a, as a precaution, what we wanted to do is make sure, um, that we kept all the exterior doors locked in case the guy came back towards Fortson, or there were passengers in the car, or until we could make sure that everything was safe, um, we took, uh, officers took the suspect into custody. Uh, we made sure that there were no other passengers in the, in the car. There was no threat, and then we went about our business and, um, reopened this, the, the, uh, the doors.
Am I understanding, you were in contact with John Leacher on that day, or?
So, I was not in contact with John Leacher.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I, I made contact with the principals at Fortson. And then, so, once we have a lockdown, we can determine, okay, what do we need to do exactly? So once everything's locked down, we, we can determine, listen, there's not a serious threat internally. Students can move between classes, they can still, we just don't wanna let anybody in the building. So security was at the doors. I was, I was inside the building. Um, but again, if we were concerned that somebody was in the building, we would handle it differently.
And we've had it.
I'm sorry. I, I just wanna mention a very important point. We're discussing here very important security details, and we can go in closed session and talk about these. So Officer, um, Mardini, thank you so much for what you do. But I would advise my superintendent and my fellow, uh, board members not to discuss things in details because this is a public meeting, and we're talking about safety of our students. So we can talk about these details, and I know we're all interested, and it's very important to clear the misconception about, oh, a soft lockdown. Hey, I, I don't really like that terminology, because a threat is a threat, officer. You know that, and we should treat it as such. And if our students are in danger, we should do whatever we can do to protect them. So, um, as far as the details, um, I think that should be discussed in a closed session. So if we need to call, call for one, I'm willing to make a motion for that.
We're not talking about things that...
I think Officer Mardini was going into the, to the details, and I may ask him, like, how fast were you to get to Fortson when you received the call? I think that's a good question, but to ask him, what are we doing in those kind of situations? We, he does know that we have emergency plans in order, that the principal already knows, that they're being trained to do these things. But if we go down to these things, this is a public meeting. I repeat again, I think we should not be discussing this openly in the public.
Okay, we'll be careful about details, but I want to disagree with you. I think, uh, there is a difference between a soft lockdown and, uh, a regular lockdown. Because you do, if, if the threat is not inside the building, and you're certain that the threat is away from the building, in the community, you still want to have the normal school day as much as possible and have students being able to go to their classes and, and feel that sense of normality and, and get the education they need.
There are a number of ways, reasons that can cause a lockdown. So I know everyone thinks of active shooters as a lockdown, right? Uh, lockdowns can be caused from like chemical, like tanker spills. You don't want kids to go outside, so you keep them in the building. I rate parents in the principal's office. You probably don't want them, you want it to lock down, close, lock the doors so they're not going through the, through the building. There's a million scenarios, and that's why just saying a lockdown, um, can be kinda misleading, or a soft lockdown or a hard lockdown.
Can I just want to add to that, we've had these kinda things in the past. And we would never get trustee Moses into tactical details that are not public. So the stuff that we're talking about is actually on some of our information. So the stuff that we're talking about is actually on some of our information for parents. It's public record on the website. Because parents need to know. In fact, so we're, but we don't, we're not going to get into what you were referring to. But what was being discussed here is already public domain, public record. It's well known.
And I'm all for that. We want to make it clear. I think I was misunderstood. We want to make it clear what really happened and, and tell them everything that is possible of what really happened on that day. We're being fully transparent. We're not hiding anything. But again, we, we can go back and talk about this terminology because when a parent, you know, God forbid, an incident happens in, in one of our schools, I'm sorry, I'm not going to come and talk to a parent who had, if, say this person gets into the school somehow. He got a door that is open and got into the school and shoots someone or does someone. That parent is going to come here to this podium. I cannot, or obviously have, I cannot face that parent. And I want to make sure that, let me finish as Madam President. I want to make sure as a school board trustee that I did everything possible to protect our students. And if we're talking a lockdown, it's a lockdown. We can do all of these things. And obviously, we want to continue, of course. Not every threat, we take every threat seriously, Dr. Maleko, right? But we don't want these fake also threats to disrupt our schools. And if the incident is happening outside the school, yes, I think the school did everything and the officer did everything that he was supposed to do. But to come here and talk about these details, we do have, actually trustee Lane, former trustee Lane, is the one who introduced this to the state government that we can call for a closed session and about, talk about.
I agreed with her 100% and was also on that, pushing for that. But there's a difference when you get into information and it, that has to do with the way we handle situations, information that we do need to keep close to the vest. This general, we're having a general discussion right now. And I just have to say that our officers and the people in our community that are charged with the safety, I have to give them the benefit that they know what they're doing. And they will know if the subject has left the premises, is not, no longer on the grounds of the school. They also, there's a distinguished, like you said, if there is a train derailment or there's chemicals or something, there's no reason to keep the children in their own classrooms. The difference between a soft lockdown and a hard lockdown, soft lockdown is things still go on inside the building, but nobody can come and go. And there are reasons and causes, I think that that is the appropriate move. And there's reasons and causes where it is appropriate to keep every child in place where they're at.
For example, Gear Park Elementary, let's say there's stray dogs, a pack of pit bulls outside. They could go on lockdown, so they're not going outside for recess. Again, lockdown triggers everyone thinking about active shooters. It's not necessarily that. It's usually not that. It's, it's usually something else that's less severe. And again, it's about keeping the students safe.
Absolutely. And that's what our charge is around here and we take that very seriously. Trustee Petchikoff.
I think one of the issues here is, is that there was a disconnect in how the communication occurred within the building itself. And that there were some teachers who heard lockdown and thought barricade the door, while others understood the exterior doors were going to be locked while the threat was outside of the building. And so that lack of consistent training for all of the staff within the building caused confusion. Add to that the social media factor of students and teachers with cell phones videotaping what's going on inside the building and the differences between one classroom to another created even more anxiety for those who were not within the building knowing what was going on that day. And the fact is, is that we have to do our best job possible in explaining, and that's one of the reasons we're having this conversation today, what the difference is, A, of why we do an exterior lockdown versus an interior full barricade lockdown. What would precipitate, what would precipitate the need for one versus the other and what the expectations are so that our parents understand what their students could be experiencing during those occurrences. And we need to, and as you said, we just saw a school in Detroit where they had loose dogs that got into a building and bit a couple of students. We also had another school that a, a group of adults entered the building even though they had security guards at the doors and started a brawl in the hallway. There's a whole variety of occurrences that we want to be able to protect our buildings from exposing our students to. But there's a different set of circumstances that create a different response depending on what is going on to cause a lockdown. And parents, just like I understood the confusion when we started talking about lockdowns last year in the drill training and they didn't, and they would hear that we were having tabletop drills and that we weren't doing drills inside the schools. They didn't understand the difference between a entire community tabletop drill, which involved police, fire, emergency personnel, plus the school, versus the regular drills that every school building has to go to through by law in helping the teachers and the administration lock a classroom door and what they need to do in covering windows and, and getting ready, which does occur in all our buildings, but we don't call it what they thought we were calling it when we call it an active shooter drill. And there was confusion there as well because we use so many different terminologies in our, in our information pieces. So what we really need to do is do a better job about how we communicate what we do and why we do it and what to expect when we do it.
I think one thing would be changing the terminology instead of soft lockdown.
I completely agree.
Just, you know, exterior lockdown or a complete lockdown. Not just, not just interior, because then it makes it seem like the exterior, exterior or complete lockdown. Something I think that, and just to add to your point too, trustee Petchikoff, is at the same time, to add to a perfect storm, we're in the process of changing over a system that we have that, that is an alarm system. And we are in the process of that and whenever you're changing a major system, you're going to have bugs in the system and then you find out what's going wrong. So, so all of these things together just made communications difficult and made information getting out not solid across the board. So, so we're working on it. We find out when there's issues and we do everything we can to solve them. Always, always having the safety of our students is our top priority. Trustee, Mary.
First of all, sir, thank you for your service and it sounds to give you all the right things on that day. What I heard trustee Mosov say, I don't think he was questioning, you know, what you were getting into or what Dr. Maleko was getting into. He was kind of putting us like, be careful. You can't get into it. That's all. It wasn't, it wasn't anything personal. And I completely agree with trustee Petchikoff. I think we need to take a good look, Dr. Maleko, and probably use the right terminology. Social media, we can't just keep on being up on social media. Social media could be a good thing, could be a bad thing, but you know, depends on how we react to it. So social media is part of our life moving forward, so it's there.
But it adds to the communication.
There's nothing, there's absolutely nothing we can do. There's nothing Dr. Maleko can do from Ten Eyck or whatever to, to stop that or anything.
Except encourage people to go to the proper sources if you want information about the district.
I'm talking about social media. There's people.
I think he was talking about.
I was talking, but.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah. I mean, people are out there, they're on social media. I'm old blah, blah, blah. So I'm on Facebook. Everybody else on more advanced social media. We can't at that point direct them to the, but we can educate them and at the same time educate ourselves moving forward, educate our employees in the buildings that, you know, what is a, you know, what does an internal lockdown mean? Explain it to them. Maybe they should at least once a year go through a drill and get, get the right terminology. So again, thank you.
Absolutely. Trustee Mosov.
Yeah, I just want to also thank Officer Mardini. I've seen him so many times at Gear Park and he's been such an amazing officer with our students and they love him a lot. I still have selfies with Omar in fourth, fifth grade, so he needs to take another selfie. But yeah, social media, I mean, what happened at Fortson and what's going to happen in every school. Students right now, they're going to text each other. They're going to text each other in groups. They're going to say, hey, we have a lockdown. Hey, what's going on? Hey, it travels now as an instant. So unfortunately, yes, trustee Mary, we cannot stop that anymore. But what we can do is, is making sure that if there is a threat to our schools, that our teachers are trained, that our staff are trained, that our officers are trained. So I welcome the idea of increasing training for our teachers and even the, the officers. Obviously, I think we focus more on only security to be trained. But unfortunately, we do know from previous school shootings that we have to train everybody. We have to train even the lunch lady of finding danger or how do you deal with danger if somebody just barges in and they're not supposed to be there? I went to a few schools and I was checking purposely. I was going through the wrong door in the back and just making sure that that door is locked, that I have to go through the front door and, and ring the bell. That's how we should have it. We should not have any doors and we should educate our staff of making sure that doors are locked. Again, we live in a society right now where we expect the unexpected. And again, I want to make sure that we do everything possible in our, to the extent of our ability to make, to prevent those things from happening. Obviously, we cannot prevent every possible plausible incident to happen in our schools. But did we do the right things? And thank you. I still need the answer. How long did it take you to get to Fortson?
How long did it take me?
How long, how much time did it take you?
From the initial call?
What was that?
From the initial call?
Yeah.
Less than two minutes.
Thank you.
Trustee Watts.
So I think to help our parents out, because this is the new age where they hear a lockdown and unfortunately you go to worst case scenario. And as a parent, that hits you. And so I think the distinction between a soft lockdown and a hard lockdown, it's almost a matter of, when you say it's not a hard lockdown, it's still a lockdown. I think in their mind, and it's one of those where they're not being heard. So I would say a couple of things that if we could change the terminology, and I think just in general, that says maybe an interior versus an exterior. I think that gives us an optic. They know what that means. So a parent doesn't necessarily then go to the, they know what that is. But I was looking on our website and I guess, is there somewhere on our website where it gives the distinction between?
The current terminology.
Yeah, well, I'm just looking. I know at the bottom it says school safety drills. But outside of that, is there anything on the website if parents had questions that they would be able to find those answers?
There was an E3 article. We pumped it out again this year when we were doing the training. And we did do intensive training with the Dearborn Police Department on the Alice that we're bringing in. And in that Alice training too, there's distinctions to what you may want to know public versus not. One of the reasons we do want the parents to know what you can call an exterior or, it is defined online as a soft lockdown, so that's why we're using it. But we can look at that with our team and obviously we'd have to talk, discuss it with the Dearborn Police. But we had several years ago where we had a lot of parents go into one building when, when one of these soft or exterior lockdowns occurred. And so that was one of the reasons. In fact, I went to the PTA a few years ago and was asking for their help and then COVID hit. But we do have it out on E3 and we did ask the principals when we were doing the training back in January, which we took the entire staff through both online and there were some a combination of online and in person. We actually changed some PD dates based on what we talked to the teachers. And I think Ms. Mazza may have been in that discussion with me and others from the union that said, let's change one of the PD's, or two of them in January and schools either got them in January, February. And then our administrators have been going through the training too and the Alice is a shift. So we do, we do know that we need to inform the public more until what we can inform them. And then there are some tactical things that we would not be sharing and it is part of the program. So I'm listening to all of you. We're taking notes and we'll come back to our.
I would, I guess I suggest that because we have a committee with our city and city relations, I would suggest that maybe that we bring this up in our committee just to clean it up. Because again, I think when parents hear lockdown, they, they go to worst case scenario.
Trustee Petchikoff.
And one other question then, since we do have, and, and some of the confusion at times may be with our substitute teachers that may be in the building and not be as familiar with the training. I don't know what educare or edu-staff does in preparing them or whether we could potentially have somebody nominated in each building to be the, if something were to occur, to hit the rooms that have substitute teachers to help them, guide them, something. Something to help increase the ability for people who are in the buildings, who are not yet trained, who missed the training day, whatever, to understand what they should and shouldn't be doing during these exterior versus interior lockdowns and, and help sort that through so it isn't left to their imaginations as to how they should perform.
Trustee Watts.
But I would take it a steps further and say that those substitute teachers should have that training before they enter our buildings.
But I don't, since we contracted out, I don't know what.
I wonder, yeah, if we can look into see what.
I can look into it, but I do know they get some training when they're oriented. It's part of the protocol, but we can double check.
Yeah, let's double check and see what that is.
It's very rare that they're going to experience it at any given time. So, you know, it, it might, might not be consistent enough to help them.
Going back to something that was brought up earlier, I'm under the assumption that all of our employees, whether they are cafeteria workers or they do have some training. Is that correct in safety and?
Go ahead. Oh, so obviously I can't speak for the school district. I can't. The police department doesn't tell the schools what to do. But for my, and Fortson's not my school. That's assigned to me. But for my schools that are specifically assigned to me, when I do Alice training with them, we always focus on everybody. The engineer, maintenance, kitchen staff, because they're so busy and they want to get lunch out. They're always really focused. But I really push like everybody has to be trained in Alice, at least just from my, my perspective.
I would like to make sure that that happens because the safety of our students is everyone's business, whoever is in that building in a professional capacity. So can we make sure that that happens?
We're planning. And in fact, everyone gets the online modules.
Okay.
But we know that online isn't the most effective for everyone. I went through the online module. We all, we purchased that Alice and we're getting it for everyone. And we're talking about doing different drills, having days at transportation and other areas. Yeah, and I do know that one of the drills that they do do out is, it has to be during lunchtime. So they do get some experience with the lunchroom monitors and kitchen staff and what so on. Yeah, and the lockdowns are required by law and they are required to have some unannounced. So that's why we're trying to also let parents know, look, you know, in a situation, it's, we can't, we, we've tried to announce some of them so that we know when Oxford occurred, we didn't want to make people nervous. But by state law, you're, you're not supposed to be, have some of them pre-announced.
Trustee Mazza.
Yeah, I think we talked about this when Oxford incident happened, about the Alice training. I thought that was going to be in person or at least having certified officers come and train our teachers, not just a video. Supplemental with the video.
Yeah, we did both. Like I said, we changed those days.
So all of our teachers were and staff were trained, at least were given the opportunity to be trained by Alice certified officers or no?
The training went back to each building. I don't know that we had officer in every building. We did it as a full district, so we wouldn't have had an officer.
So we had a full district training.
We had full district training with the officers and our principals and then they went back in the building like a trainer, trainers model. And my understanding is there were some discussions, but we did have some officers in some of the buildings doing it. For example, I know Chad Hansen at Dearborn High and others. So we were doing a combination.
Yeah, and I, just to speak.
With a large district, you know, 2,700 people.
Just to speak to that. And I can only speak for my schools and the schools that I've been part of. The schools were trained in with the online modules and like you said, that's not always the most effective learning tool for everybody, me included. But we would go, myself and Corporal Sala to his schools and have a debriefing and we would talk. They would do their modules and they would ask us, well, what if this, what if that, how should we do this? I didn't understand this. We would answer their questions. I think that was a good, a good way to handle it.
Trustee Watts.
I just wanted to follow up. I did look at edu-staff and they do require all of their substitute teachers to have active shooter training. So they do have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.